Evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council meeting. And we'll call this meeting to order. Councillor Beatty provides his regrets for this evening's meeting. And we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'm clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Through your worship, I do see councillor Burbak's hand.
Oh, sorry, councillor Rebecca, didn't see that.
Okay, thank you. Planning and Heritage Committee, item 5.1. I'm on a board that's would like to put signs up at the located property, so I will be not voting on that issue.
Thank you. Clerk notes that. Go ahead, Ben.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford dated June 27th be adopted as printed.
Councillor Gaffney and councillor Ritzman moving in seconding that the minutes of June 27th be adopted. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and just prior to today's meeting, an addendum was circulated. And there is a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated July 11th, 2022, to add delegations to the regular council agenda be added as printed.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Clifford and councillor Ingram, seconding discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item five is report of the committee of the whole and camera session. And item 5.1, at the June 27th session under the municipal act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. Now, it's item 4.1, proposed disposition of land in the Crane Rest Business Park, under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land exemption under the act. And there is a recommendation that the city of Stratford hereby consents the sale of the properties known as lots two and three in the Crane West Business Park, legally described as part of lot one and two concession three designated as parts nine, 10, and 11 on reference plan 44R-5904. And it's subject to a drainage easement over part nine in the city of Stratford, County of Perth.
Councillor Ritzman moving, councillor Gaffney second, discussion. Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item 5.2, just prior to today's council meeting, a committee of the whole and camera session was held to consider the following items. The first being item 4.1, proposed disposition of land in the right business park. And that was considered under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land exemption. And item 5.1, arbitration update, and that was considered under the litigation or potential litigation, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality exceptions. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on both items.
Thank you.
Turning to your addendum, item six is hearings of deputations and presentations. And there is a motion that the correspondence from Karen Zemaria and Jack McDonald dated July 11th, 2002, 2022, my apologies, be received. And that the delegations by Reverend R.L. Reed, president of the Stratford and area bed and breakfast association, Karen Zemaria and Jack McDonald and Murray Sanderson regarding item 11.4 be heard.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Ingram and seconded by councillor Burbak. The delegations be heard. All those in favor? And that is carried, and I'll let the clerk bring our guests into the meeting.
Through your worship, we're just working to connect Reverend R.L. Reed.
Good evening, Reverend Reed.
Good evening.
I'll turn the floor over to you.
This is regarding 11.4. Are we ready to speak to that?
Yes, the floor is yours to make a presentation.
Okay. So on June 21st, Joan Thompson, CEO of the city, and Carmen Kruger, Director of Corporate Services Treasure, invited SABAB board to provide feedback on a draft proposal of the mat. It was inferred that this feedback was to be presented only as a draft for discussion and information versus a vote. I can quote several times on the invitation where Carmen inferred this. As we all know, it was voted on at the subsequent council meeting. Initially, Carmen also asked that this feedback session with our board would be sufficient at half an hour. And apologies, but a half an hour is not sufficient for this subject. Additionally, this meeting invitation once again did not provide sufficient lead time to read, assimilate the draft, and/or gather our own data to present as further considerations. We are asking council to defer further implementation of the MAT bylaw, given that there's been no further engagement with SABAB subsequent to our meeting with either Joan Thompson or Carmen Kruger on the points and/or considerations that they said they were going to include in the proposed bylaw draft and/or discussion. Many of these were around the breakdown of the intent and the economics around the management of the MAT. As Murray Sanderson is our SABAB MAT representative, I'm going to now turn the floor over to him as we've had previous discussion. I fully support what Murray is about to present.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Sanderson. The floor is yours.
My first comment, the MAT was first raised in council in February 2020. And the instructions at that time by council to staff was to commence public consultations. Obviously, due to COVID, this was not done understandably. However, at this point in time, we're now faced with not only the reinst- re-institution of the MAT, but we actually have a bylaw prepared and ready for vote. We certainly have not had the consultation that we thought we were going to get. And to my knowledge, I don't know that anybody else has. I think this is something that's very important and that should be put to the public consultation with the the various groups that are going to be affected and get a little more feedback than we've been able to give up to this point in time. I will say that I can't speak for the hotels, but I can certainly speak for the bed and breakfasts, and the bed and breakfast community is opposed to the MAT for a number of reasons, many of which were sent out in an email this morning by myself to all the councillors. I presume everyone has had a chance to read that, although councillor seven was the only one that actually responded. The I will go through some of the main points. As I said, I believe that this is a matter that requires consultation with the community that is going to be footing the bill, so to speak. And you can say that it's the tourist that's going to be paying it, but the cost to the bed and breakfast community to break out the meals. And we have one charge, most bed and breakfast charge, one single amount. We provide meals to various various differences. Some have continental, some have gourmet meals, some have no meals at all. But in any event, anyone that is charging a meal is going to have to break that out of their cost. Anybody that has parking, and of course, your license requires us to have parking, will have to be broken out of the cost. Most bed and breakfasts now provide Wi-Fi, have to be broken out of the cost. And obviously, anything else that is not accommodations itself. For the bed and breakfast owner, this is a considerable hardship, to be quite honest. We don't have the facilities to do this. We don't have the accounting systems to do this. As I say, basically, we charge one price, add HST on top of it, and that's it. Now, we'll have to break it all out and plus have HST on the MAT as well. The the other, and the main, the other point that I would like to make, or one other point that I would like to make is back in February of 2020, council not only instructed the staff to do some consultation, but they also had, there's also provision to look at tourism in the city of Stratford, which hasn't been done. There is also a provision to review the, at that time, STA, now Destination Stratford, and that was not done either. I think, you know, another point that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse in some, to some extent, that you have a licensing bylaw which you're not enforcing now. You're proposing a short-term accommodation bylaw, which is not in place, but the MAT will be. How do you expect to enforce this provision on anybody that isn't licensed until both of those bylaws are enacted and enforced? It's just, it's not going to happen. I think what needs to happen is that short-term accommodation needs to be, the bylaw needs to be passed first, and it needs to be enforced, and the licensing bed and breakfast bylaw needs to be enforced as well. The, my understanding is there's 41 licensed B&Bs in the city of Stratford. Quick search of Airbnb, and they've got something in the order of 150. The, and we have brought this before the bylaw enforcement in the past, and nothing is happening. I do believe that this will, in fact, hurt accommodations or tourism in Stratford. I believe it will reduce the number of overnight stays. 4% doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add everything else, they're actually coming here and paying some over 17, by the time you calculate the HST on the MAT, over 17% in tax. It's going to either reduce overnight stays or restaurant meals or something because people have limited budgets. The other the other aspect of this that I see is that without the proper enforcement of the licensing bylaw, the bed and breakfast, and the short-term accommodations, all this is going to do is drive more and more bed and breakfast underground. The I understand there's some difficulty in enforcement, but it needs to be, needs to be done, and that needs to be done before any, the MAT goes in place. Otherwise, all you're doing is is putting a burden on the licensed bed and breakfast and letting the unlicensed bed and breakfast free to do what they want. Probably, probably no, well, certainly no fire inspection, may not even have fire alarms. Probably do not have the insurance that we're required to cover. And and obviously, the licensing fee is not in their budget either. So they're, they have been given an unfair advantage for some time, and this is only going to increase that. I would, as a final point, encourage the city councillors to reconsider this tax until further study has been undertaken. The damage that it's going to cause, in my opinion, is going to be insurmountable and will drive short-term accommodators, either underground or out of business. In the alternative, if you're not prepared to put it on hold, I would ask that you exempt bed and breakfast, licensed bed and breakfast from the MAT, payment of the MAT. Those are my comments. I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Is there any questions from Mr. Sanderson at this time? All right, seeing no questions, we appreciate you making your presentation to us this evening.
Thank you.
Through your worship, we will now connect the final delegation for this section, for this section.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Matheson. We are Jack McDonald and Karen Zemaria and co-proprietors of a B&amp;B on Bay Acrylic Dreams that we've been running for 35 years. We started as a guest house, just renting out rooms, and then went into the full-fledged business, putting thousands and thousands of dollars to add additions such as bathrooms, as well as additional rooms, et cetera, et cetera, and beautifying our 1879 Ontario cottage for our guests, for our clientele, as well as for our neighborhood at 66 Bay Street. I feel compelled that it is our duty to speak out when we learned just late last Saturday night via a friend's email, all about this. We had not been alerted or advised or notified by anyone from the city beforehand. And so I must speak off the cuff with such short notice to think about it, but I really feel compelled that it is our duty to not only ourselves, but all fellow accommodators. And I would like to say I concur with my colleagues to sets of comments and their presentations. I have no idea why there was no advisement of this and why last Monday, the council, you passed a 4% MAX MAT tax to be charged on for all tourists staying overnight in all Stratford accommodations. As you know, we have all endured an over-two-year period of a global pandemic impacting all businesses and our lives, but particularly accommodations have been very hard hit. Now, now that we're in our seventh wave, and monkeypox is lurking in the background, and perhaps new variants coming through as we go to the fall and winter, we have no idea, any of us, what is coming. Many of us had to be completely closed down with our businesses 100% decimated for the last two years. And we're slowly, some of us getting back on our feet, although many of us did not survive, had to sell their businesses or reinvent their place of business. For example, some older couples who were running a B&amp;B for years changed their home and B&amp;B into a multi-generational house so that other generations of their very own family could live with them, and they could no longer survive waiting to have the bed and breakfast industry come back. And even though we have just started back, it's not like a big grand opening with thousands and thousands and thousands of requests. Many of us recently have also had cancellations last minute because the clients tested positive before coming, positive for COVID-19, before coming into Stratford. With gas prices soaring, as well as basic necessities such as the cost of food, shelter, and clothing, and inflation, last time I heard, is now 7.7%. Is this the time to consider implementing the passing of another tax for the consumer and tourist to pay? Would this not repel them and make them have a second question whether they would like to come to Stratford and stay overnight? Um, you know, why is there such haste to have this pass so quickly at this time? An election is slated for the fall, when many of you aren't going to be running again for reelection. I don't personally understand why this is being done now. Would it not be more prudent to see what happens in the fall/winter season with variants and with a new set of councillors and a new mayor? And consider what is happening and see if the counts spike with the variants in Stratford, as well as the rest of the globe? So many already are still hesitant to travel and to stay overnight in any other place but their own homes. And with such an uncertainty about the evolution of this virus and the variants, maybe it's time to really pause. How much money would be spent by Stratford to organize a team to collect a 4% MAT tax from all Stratford accommodators? And how would it be processed? What would the actual net profit be on that amount, and how could it be regulated efficiently? How much would it cost to implement effectively? And how much would it bring in net after all the expenses that are paid out to people who are regulating this? Will more accommodagers be forced to sell and/or declare bankruptcy after a more than two-year struggle? Are the funds to draw a MAT tax from businesses with a few rooms, is it not negligible and is it worth it to the city of Stratford to go after the little guy, the small business? Are there not more lucrative and more creative options such as a DMF tax at a very minimal amount? I would suggest that right now, there are so many more day trippers than those who have the funds or the desire to stay overnight. So do the math. And with the lack of people staying overnight, how much revenue would a MAT tax actually bring into the Stratford city coffers? Don't we want to draw in tourism and attract tourists to stay overnight for multiple nights? Now, our Ontario government is offering a tax rebate staycation credit to attract those from our own province, not from the states or other provinces, to stay overnight so that they can apply to have this taken off their taxes. And in the past, I want to remind some of you that might not be aware of this. There used to be, from the federal government, a rebate that we could give a form to our foreign guests, whether they be from the states or Europe or Mexico or wherever, they could apply to get this tax back. And here, Stratford is proposing that we're going to put another tax on our clients who come from all over the world. You know, and if this is for the destination Stratford, I just wanted to make note that in 35 years of accommodation business, we have not had one referral. One, not one. So I, I'm sorry, but I'm sure for all of us, for many of us, it's not helping us in the accommodation sectors. We, the accommodator sectors, are the ambassadors, the goodwill stewards and the concierges, and we promote all the local businesses and all the local services in our town, whether it be restaurants or going to rent a paddle boat or going to the Stratford, Perth Museum or the art gallery. You know, we're doing this every day in our businesses, for B&amp;Bs in our homes, and having forums every morning at breakfast time promoting Stratford. As Murray mentioned, we include a breakfast in our rates. So how would you determine to do that out of the portion of the MAT? I have no idea about the arithmetic to deal with that. Would, I'd like to thank everybody for your consideration to be open and flexible and inspired to do more research for other options for revenue for our city. Because if anything, we want to attract people who come here to, so that they enjoy our wonderful city that we're blessed to live in, and to spend their money on, in the restaurants, to spend their money going to Rio Thompson's or Brad Shaw's, to spend their money going to the Stratford Festival. And to be frank, the Stratford Festival is, I would say, 99.9% of the people who come and stay, they do go to the Stratford Festival. And I just want to thank them very much for being here, or many of us would not be around. So please consider different alternatives. Please scrap the tax. Thank you for listening, and I really hope that you decide that this is not a positive step for Stratford, and it's not to your benefit or anyone else's best interest or benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Ms. Samara? Mary, all right. Thank you very much for taking the time today. Mary. All right. Thank you very much for taking the time today. Adam Clark, whenever you're ready.
Through you worship. Item seven is orders of the day and item seven point one is a proclamation and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaims two thousand and twenty-two as the two-hundred-and-thirtieth anniversary of the Year of Black Loyalist Exodus of Fifteen Ships to Sierra Leone in the city of Stratford.
Moved by Council Richmond, second by Council Burbank. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry.
Item seven point two is a proclamation and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two as World Duchenne Awareness Day in the city of Stratford to raise awareness of and show support for those living with Duchenne muscular dystrophy.
Moved by Council Ingram, second by Council Bunting. Discussion. Not all in favor? Opposed, any? It's carried.
Item seven point three is another proclamation and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim September nineteenth to two to the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as Rail Safety Week in the city of Stratford to raise awareness of rail safety, save lives and prevent injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens.
Would be Council Gaffney, seconded by Council Seven. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? It's carried.
Item seven point four is a resolution for a tender award and through your worship, it's my understanding the C A O would like to speak to this item.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Thompson at this time. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, your worship. So with respect to the the tender for the asphalt, um you will note that there is um a recommendation to expand the the scope of the work. Um, just wanted to point out that the firm recommendation from staff is that council approved the additional scope of the work uh for the tender price there. We have provided some information in the report as to why um this scope is being recommended to be expanded. And um we have the manager of engineering um at the meeting tonight as well to give specifics as to why that section of C H Meyer Boulevard um is being recommended uh for the additional scope of work if council so wishes.
This council's wish to hear from Ms. Rolston to go over the scope of the work. Council Clifford. Council Henderson, seconding. All those in favor? It's carried. Uh, please bring Ms. Rolston in me. Good evening, Nancy. How are you?
Oh, through your worship. Um, so we um when we got the tender prices in and saw we had a considerable amount of budget remaining, uh we were looking for a way to best use those funds. And uh C H Meyer, which is right adjacent to the stretch of Ontario Street that we're repaving, is um due to be resurfaced. It's a very poor quality and it's um right within the work area of Ontario Street, so we could add it to the scope of work without having to pay for additional mobilization. Uh, the traffic control costs would be very low since they're do already doing traffic control in the area. Um, there's no conflicts with uh residential driveways. There's not a lot of infrastructure under the pavement. It was just a a good stretch of road that needs work that we can easily add to the contract. And the contractor that we contacted said they were willing to do it for the prices that are already in the tender, so we had all the item prices in the contract already. So um that's the stretch of additional work we're recommending to move forward with.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rolston. Is there any questions for Ms. Rolston? Council Clifford?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I've had complaints about John Street and I brought this up before and I I I called the Director of Corporate Services about early. Had they talked about John Street or is it a long-term um project and lot of infrastructure? I'm just asking out of curiosity because I've been asked by people.
Um, we do recognize John Street needs work. We are considering it for next year. We didn't really look at it for adding to this contract because um we would have two separate contractors working in the same work area, which we couldn't separate them. It would be a a bit of a snarl for traffic control to have both Huron Street under construction and then John Street right in the same place. Plus, it's a very different sort of area, lots of residential driveways, lots of infrastructure in the road to deal with. Um, it just wasn't a good choice for this contract.
Any questions? Council Henderson?
Are we at least going out to patch some of the areas on John Street, you know? Is it on the list?
Uh, through the chair, I know Public Works is looking at which areas they're going to uh smooth out with uh filling in some potholes. I believe they're considering John Street, but I don't know their timing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any? Council Ingram?
Uh, thank you. I'll move the staff recommendation, including the additional scope of work.
All right. Second or Council Ritzma. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry.
Item eight is business, which previous notice has been given and there's none scheduled. Moving to item nine, report of the Standing Committee. Item nine point one is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there are two items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point one point one is Planning Report Zone Change Amendment Zed zero-two dash twenty-two, and that's for three eighty-five West Gore Street. And item nine point one point two is Planning Report Draft Plan of Condominium Application, thirty-one C D M twenty-two dash zero zero two, and that's for eighty-four Church Street.
As for Ingram, moving seconded by Council Burbank. Discussion. Council Seven.
Take nine point one point one separately, please.
Yes. Anything further? All right, we'll go to nine one one. Any discussion for members of committee? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, any? Three opposed, that carries. Item nine one two. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried.
Item ten is Notice of Intent and there's none scheduled. Moving to item eleven, reading up the bylaws. There are five bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item eleven point one is the transfer to McKinley Hatchery of certain lands in the Crane West Business Park. Item eleven point two is toward the tender for the asphalt resurfacing, and I would note uh the expanded scope of the project uh will cost uh two million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and six, three dollars and twenty-seven cents, and that will be added into the bylaw. Item eleven point three is to delegate council's authority to approve site plans. Uh, item eleven point four is the municipal accommodation tax bylaw. And item eleven point five is to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone lands known municipally as three eighty-five West Gore Street. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council presence.
Council Henderson, I see your hand.
We have eleven point four taken separately, please.
Okay. Council Seven?
Could I request eleven point three and five also be taken separately?
Sure. Is anyone wishing to move eleven, one and two be taken collectively? Council Clifford moving, second by Council Ritzma. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously, so we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws eleven, one and eleven, two. Council Henderson, we'll move second by Council Burbank. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Third and final reading of bylaws eleven, one and two. Council Bunting and Council Gaffney. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Item eleven, three is the bylaw to delegate council authority to approve site plans. Is there someone willing to move first and second reading? Council Richmond, Council Ingram. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? Or opposed, that's carried. Third and final reading. Moved by Council Ingram and second by Council Henderson. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in fa- oh, Council Burbank, sorry. Did you, are you voting or you have it? Okay. All right. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Want to oppose, that's carried. Bylaw eleven point four, municipal accommodation tax. Is there anyone willing to move first and second reading? Council Bunting and Council Vazalacos. Discussion. Council Henderson?
I would like to refer this back to staff. Um, I've heard from many people, and of course we all have, that there's many groups that have not been consulted, and I feel that that needs to happen first before we move forward.
Okay. Before I I take the referral motion, I will take Council Vazlakos, who had her hand up before you had put that on the floor, so I would just let her to speak to that. Council Vazlakos.
Thank you. I was gonna bring up this item under new business, but I think it more appropriate here. I got my order mixed up. Um, I just want to point out that um we had actually approved in principle the mat tax back in twenty nineteen, I believe, or you know, early twenty twenty. We'd already sort of approved that we were going to move ahead with it, and a lot of it was going to be not the, not are we going to do it? We're going to that the how and the how it's going to be done. And so um uh part of the staff um report came back was, we're not going to start it until twenty twenty-three because um we want to do some of that work that, you know, that making sure we get it right and 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 the policy around it and the and a lot of the how. And so um I think it's a really, what I've I've heard back from a lot of especially small accommodators and I've sort of, I've heard their concern around operationally and administratively, it could put them at a disadvantage. The mat itself, I don't think um it doesn't reduce tourism. There's no evidence that it actually reduces people who come to visit, but I can actually understand the administrative burden on smaller accommodators. But wha- what I want to point out is that there is a lot of time between now and July twenty twenty-three, I believe, where some of tho- those conversations can happen. I'm I'm hoping what we can do is refer to staff to make sure that those small accommodators are actually um uh consulted on what the administrative piece of it looks like for them and what support could be available for them. And I think what's really good is we have a number of examples of municipalities that are similar in size to us that do actually have a lot of small accommodators where they have a couple years of experience to actually flag what could be the pitfalls, how we could do it well, what worked and what didn't. So I I just wanted to to sort of, one, make sure that staff reach out to those smaller accommodators when they start to consider ha- the how of this is gonna happen. And then, and then, and then when it comes back to us, we can ensure that they have been consulted and there are some considerations for their administrative burden. And so I just wanted to make that comment with this. Because I'll point out, even Niagara on the Lake tabled their mat in twenty twenty-two and circled back and are doing it now. Um, because there are some clear benefits to the communities um in terms of being able to maintain their destination.
Council Ingram?
Thank you, and I just want to piggyback on that. I have been um trading emails with the Director of Corporate Services and the B I A. Um, the B I A had requested that there be some um se- sessions held just so that all accommodators can understand how to implement this and and as Council Vazlakos has just referred to that the how of of the administration portion of it. Um, so the director and the B I A have been in conversation. Partly with me is is the negotiator in the in or the mediator in the middle, um talking about how, when and and how this is going to to roll out.
Council Seven and Council Clifford, Council Burbank.
Thank you. So it just, I am able to comment on that. Eleven point four, is that appropriate? I just didn't know if Council Anderson's for promotion was.
Yeah, it'll it'll go on the floor. The chair is gonna indulge everyone for one trip around the.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure and then and then if we could just clarify uh Council Anderson's motion at that point in the future, but I just wanted to comment. So I I just, first I want to refer to my, just my comments from February twenty twenty. Um, I I I said that first, as I commented when this initially came to the council, so before then, that my concern is that this came to council and the ball has started in motion without a real discussion on whether this is good for the city or not. My feeling then was that if we move forward uh further into setting the framework without a fulsome discussion on the matter, the discussion will skip prematurely to how to implement the tax rather than should we implement it at all. Um, and and so that was then, and and I still feel the same way now. I think, I think, you know, I I don't support this. Um, the M A T, I feeling, given the the comments that I've received, the comments from the present presentations tonight. Um, especially that the proposed consultation process, uh to say the least, did not materialize. Um, I think that, you know, I I don't support this. I don't want to see it go ahead. At the very least, I think we should be um giving more time to make a decision and have further consultation as we outlined in the initial process, so I I don't support uh the the motion on the floor for, well, the eleven point four to accommodation tax. And uh, yeah, I I do want to record a vote if there's no referrals, so.
Now, the the referral vote will go through first, is it uh, we'll take precedent. Council Clifford then Council Burbank.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I support the mat tax. I I don't think it's going to stop people coming in. I've been planning a trip uh like down east and almost everywhere there's there's a tax. But what I want to know, the emails I've been getting, they they keep, and I don't, I I was here, but unfortunately I don't remember everything. In the emails, it it claims that we promised a consultation with with various groups, including bed and breakfast. I'd like to ask staff, in staff opinion, have we done the consultations that we promised to do?
Sure. Ms. Thompson, would you like to address that question? Thank you.
Certainly. Uh, thank you. Through you, your worship. Um, so Stratford City Council, as you know, approved in principle the establishment of the mat uh for accommodation accommodators in the city of Stratford. It was going to be effective Jan one, twenty twenty-one. That that and that decision of council was made on February the tenth, twenty twenty. On February the twenty-fourth of that year, a report was presented to council outlining a public consultation process for the proposed uh mat. The public consultation process was to include the following: information on the website, social media, the newspaper, establishment of a fact sheet, creation of a survey, submission of comments by email and meetings with stakeholders, um including the holding of two public open houses. The online survey for the mat was live from February the twenty-fifth until uh April the first, twenty twenty, when the last submission was received. The responses received, both to the survey and from the general emails, were roughly fifty uh responses. Among those seven indicated that they were in favor of the mat and the remainder were not in favor of it. Um, stakeholder groups, including uh Stratford Tourism Alliance at the time, which is now Destination Stratford in a new structure, new format, the hotel motel and bed and breakfast owners, City Center B I A, R T O four, the festival, Chamber of Commerce and Invest Stratford, um were contacted with invitations to participate in face-to-face meetings with staff to discuss those details of the mat and to allow for feedback. But of course, due to COVID, that did not happen. One stakeholder meeting was held with the Bruce Hotel. Others were scheduled, but they had to be canceled due to the pandemic. On November twenty-three, twenty twenty, direction was given to halt the development of the mat and a Stratford Tourism Alliance review to be done and to direct that a consultant be uh obtained to develop a tourism strategy for the city of Stratford. Um, council, as you, as I said, approved the mat in principle and gave direction to proceed with the consultation. The initial consultation that was undertaken is included in the latest uh Matt's staff report before you. The mat work was paused in November twenty twenty, as council had given that direction to do a tourism strategy. Subsequently, tourism was reorganized and became Destination Stratford with a new mandate and a new structure as the lead Stratford tourism uh industry with a new board structure. It was determined that with this change in structure, that a tourism strategy by the city was also not immediately required. So the process did change in twenty twenty-two as laid out in the most recent management report and the process outlines the consultation that was followed. The pandemic has changed the previous approach to meet in person and hold uh in-person open houses. Um, as during COVID, it was not appropriate, uh and we were not allowed to meet in person. Uh, we had a public consultation in place, but COVID changed things over two years and a new process was identified. Uh, we will be holding um open houses with the accommodation providers on the implementation. We will be holding open houses with the accommodation providers on the implementation of MATT, but first require authorization of council with respect to proceed with the implementation. So that is why the bylaw that would set out the implementation process is before you this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for the CAO? Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. We did hear tonight that one, at least one of the accommodators would like to see the licensing program in place prior to the MATT tax. Can you give us an update on the licensing program and where that's at, please?
Certainly, through you, your worship. So the STRA licensee bylaw is prepared, and there is a report coming to this, this month Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Subcommittee meeting, so that will be presented. As Counselor Ingram has identified, the MATT and the STRA licensing bylaw need to go hand in hand. So that report is coming forward. That will be the enforcement for the short-term rental accommodation. So stay tuned for that report. It is coming later this month to Subcommittee. And then subject to the direction of that, it could come onto Committee and then to Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vazlakos, then Counselor Burpack.
Sorry, I was just going to add quickly, one of the issues that we had on heritage and planning when Sabbath came to us previously, that we simply did not have the capacity or the ability to do any of the enforcement. And I actually see this MATT as a really good opportunity to have some funds available to actually do the kind of enforcement work that needs to be done so that we can actually bring all of the accommodators that are out there in licensed and legal.
Thank you, Counselor Burpack, and then Counselor Ritzman.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram asked the question that I was going to ask about the short-term accommodation, so that's good to hear. I do believe that the MATT tax is good for the city overall. I was a little bit disappointed with the, some of the confusion around the consultation that especially a short-term bed and breakfast accommodators were seemingly skipped over. So I just want to ensure that everybody who's a licensed bed and breakfast owner would be included in some sort of consultation moving forward, because that seemed to have slipped through the cracks. And I also would like to see us consider some way of compensating small accommodators who have to collect the tax. Like, we could use a portion of the MAT to then help care that cost for the small accommodators. I think that would be more than fair. So those are a few of my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Ritzman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, your worship. So one of the comments that we've received in emails and in tonight's presentations was referring to meetings with stakeholders that didn't take place, and I, and I think they're referring to in-person meetings. I'm just wondering, and I threw you to the CAO, with the current status of COVID-19, would would it be possible to facilitate at this time in-person meetings with the stakeholders, or where do we stand at this current time with regards to COVID?
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, through you, your worship. So in the consultations that we are planning with the accommodation providers, we are planning for those to be in person, along with other opportunities to engage with them, to facilitate those discussions. But I will say it is contingent on public health direction and any requirements from public health officials should we be back into a similar situation. So certainly, we are mindful of it, but our intent at this point is to do it in person.
Thank you.
All right. See any other hands? Everyone's had a chance to have a conversation. Counselor Henderson was going to table a referral motion previously, and if the clerk could read back what she believes the referral motion is. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Madam Clerk.
So through your worship, if I could request clarification, it's my understanding that the motion was to refer to staff to undertake consultation. But if we could get clarification on what is to be consulted on, is it on whether or not to implement a MAT? Is it on specific items related to the MAT? And then the second would be to clarify who is to be consulted. So is it the general public, licensed accommodators? Is it specific groups such as the Stratford Area Bed and Breakfast Association, the Chamber, Destination Stratford? If we could have that additional information, that would be extremely helpful.
Yes, I, I was, I meant to port to be all the ones that would be, I guess you would call them licensed, anybody that's going to have to implement the tax. Like, what I'm hearing from people is that they weren't consulted. And I'm hearing tonight that that didn't happen because of COVID. And so I feel we should be doing the consultation before we pass the MATT thing. I think the MATT thing is going to be a good thing for our city, as I said at the last meeting. Eventually, that means that the Destination Stratford, their part of the budget will eventually be eliminated from the tax base, so that will save the residents and cities money. And also, I think, I believe it was during one of our strategic meetings on how to make money to help lower taxes and get things done in our city without burdening the residents. And a lot of people talk about how when tourists comes here, they're using our roads, they're going in our stores and everything. So of course, that has wear and tear on our roads and stuff, too. And so if we were to tax the tourists or people that are coming to visit our city, not necessarily just tourists, family and friends or whatever, if they're staying in a licensed place, they will pay that percentage. I know we've gone places and we've had to pay it, and it sounds like, you know, since, I think it was either 2017 or 2018, the provincial government here in Ontario has allowed this to happen, and several have got into that, and others are now, other cities are now realizing the benefits of it. And so although I am for it, I do want to make sure that the consultations have taken place. So does that help clarify it?
Through your worship, if I could just clarify, so is the intent to consult on whether or not the city should impose a municipal accommodation tax? Is it to consider that and the amount to be imposed, who it should be applicable to? Just looking for some additional direction in that regard.
That, I'm a little bit, I think it goes back to the 2019 where we were going to consult with them about the idea of a MATT tax. And I know we've discussed it all and researched it, and, you know, staff's brought back reports on different cities doing it. So I guess it would be to discuss all those issues with them and their concerns. I mean, we're hearing a lot of them. I just opened some tonight, some emails, which I haven't had a chance to answer yet. But, you know, people seem to be out of the loop. Like, I believe it was the bed and breakfasts were consulted, but, you know, usually it's just the head ones, like three or four of them, and then they're supposed to send the message out, I gather, to their members. And it sounds like some of the members haven't heard anything. So that was my thought on what to do.
Okay. If I could try to summarize, Counselor Henderson, so that we can succinctly try to put a motion together.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, you would like to refer this back to staff to do further consultation on whether a MATT should be imposed? The rollout of the MATT? And any feedback with regard to enforcement and collection? Correct?
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there anyone willing to second that motion that Counselor Henderson has put forward? Counselor Seven would, okay. It's a referral motion, so we, is there a point of word?
I just wanted some clarity on the motion. Just, is there, is there, well, this, is the idea that the MAT in general would come back to council then after the consultation? Is that the intent?
Well, you can't pass a bylaw this evening if, if that motion passes because it's referred back, so we have to come back to council at some point.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the referral as proposed? Those opposed? Okay, so I'll just clarify, make sure my language is right. Those in favor of the referral, is Counselor Henderson and Counselor Seven, and those opposed? All right, that is defeated. Counselor Burpack.
Thank you. Just a question of clarification. I, I thought last time we passed a motion saying that the consultations would go ahead separate from approving the, the bylaw as we're doing tonight, so that we don't need to make a separate motion for that process to continue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Seven?
If I could just request a recorded vote, please.
Yes, Counselor Vazlakos and Counselor Henderson.
No, I just thought we were at the moving. Or we'd already moved in second, though, I think, yeah.
Okay, yes, we have. Counselor Henderson, you had something else?
Well, like, I think, okay, so I'm in favor of the MATT thing so far from what I've heard. And, you know, I understand some people are confused about it and upset about it. But it just seems strange to me that we're going to pass it and then have the consultation. So what if you're in the consultation process? We discover something that we want to change? Will we still be able to do that? Will we come back and say, can we change this in what we've passed? I don't, we usually can, but I just want to double check.
I'll let the CAO answer the process question, and I recognize the hand of two members that are up.
Thank you, through you, your worship. So, yes, if, if the bylaw passes tonight and the, and then through the public consultation that we are going to be doing with the accommodation providers on the implementation of it over the next several months. If there are issues there that require further direction of council or clarification, we can report back to council. We can also commit to providing updates on that consultation. Members of council are invited to be at those sessions with the accommodation providers so that you can hear firsthand.
Right, Counselor Vazlakos, I believe you had your hand up. Nope, so Counselor Burpack? Counselor Ingram?
Thank you, and I think the CAO just clarified it for me again. I just, I just want to make sure we're all clear. It's not on whether we are moving forward with the MATT. It's the implementation of the MATT. That's what the consultation is for. So it's not that we're moving forward, it's just the implementation.
Thank you. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be answered right now, but in the presentations, and I did look online, the taxes on the room portion. The staff have an understanding, like, like, for instance, like the Wi-Fi and whatnot. It's, I'm kind of curious about that. And if you don't have the answer today, it's possibly that's after, but I didn't understand that the breakdown was so as, as, as the presentation was talking about, how they can break it down. So I'm, I'm curious about that.
All right, is there anything further? Counselor Vazlakos.
I think that's what's really great about the consultation piece, but then also reaching out to other communities that have already done the MATT. Like, they have, some have, you know, three or four years of experience with it and how it works and how you implement it and made, you know. So I think that's where we have a really good opportunity between now and a year from now to actually do a little bit of consultation with other communities, but then also make sure that our accommodators have a good sort of administrative process for, for, for charging it.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
So then, my understanding is if we pass this tonight, as Counselor Ingram was clarifying, which made it much more clearer for sure, then they'll go out and do the consultations, and then they will come back. So will staff still have to come back at some point before, it's July 1, 2023, to get a final approval from us? Is there still? Am I understanding that, that this is just the implementation of it, and then there's somebody will, they'll be coming back again for final approval? Is that what's going to happen?
Ms. Thompson, to clarify.
Yes, thank you, through you, your worship. So at the previous council meeting, council did pass the resolution to adopt the MATT. The bylaw before you this evening is required to implement that. That gives the authority to retain the collection agent and for staff to proceed to implement. As I said, we are going to be holding sessions with the accommodation providers to, to talk to them about it, how it's going to be implemented. We can commit to providing updates to council on, on the details as we are discussing them and hearing the feedback from the accomodation providers. But it is my understanding, your worship, that there is no further direction of council required with respect to implementing a 4% MAT if the bylaw should be passed and adopted this evening.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Henderson?
It's me again, sorry. And I know one of the presenters mentioned that all, you know, licensed B and B have to pay. But in the report that I read, there was many exemptions. So I'm not sure if anybody's had a chance to read that, so. And thank you for the clarification.
All right. Counselor Seven.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, just maybe for people watching, and inform myself that this, this, if this is approved, then we will be moving forward with the tax, and then the consultation will be sort of mitigating the implementation of it, but it won't be changing the implementation or the imposition of the tax, I guess.
Yes, that is correct. All right. I don't see any other hands, so I'll turn it over to the clerk to call a question when she's ready.
Through your worship, it is my understanding a recorded vote has been requested on the first and second reading of bylaw 11.4. So beginning with Counselor Seven, please state whether you are in support or opposed. Counselor Seven.
Opposed.
My apologies, Counselor Seven. Can I clarify that was opposed?
Yes, opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bunting.
Support.
Counselor Vazlakos.
Support.
Counselor Ingram.
Right.
Counselor Burpack.
Support.
Mayor Matheson.
Support.
Counselor Henderson.
Support.
Counselor Ritzma.
Support.
Counselor Clifford.
Support.
Counselor Gaffney.
Support.
So through you, your worship, there are nine in support, one opposed, and one member absent.
Thank you. I'll declare first and second reading carried, and we'll go to third and final reading. Moved by Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ingram. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? Just one opposed, it's carried.
Through your worship, it's my understanding the next item is 11.5.
Thank you. Bylaw 11.5, to be read a first and second time. Mover for such, Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ingram, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's three opposed. That carries, third and final reading, the bylaw 11.5, moved by Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? It's three opposed, and that's carried.
Item 12 is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Counselor Henderson.
I have a question. So when we pass a bylaw, it has to be passed by two-thirds of council, so that means eight. So seven voted in favor of it and three voted against it. Is that still considered passed then?
Under the procedural, it would be two-thirds of council, correct? Madam Clerk.
So through you, your worship, it's my understanding that for third and final reading to be undertaken at a meeting, two-thirds support of the members present must occur. So in this case, two-thirds of 10 members of council, seven members.
Can I ask for clarification? When does that eight come into account then?
When all eleven of us are here.
No, but we've had meetings before where we weren't over here and they said it had to be of eight, so I'm just trying to remember what that was for.
Through your worship, that would be when a motion to reconsider is being considered by council. In those cases, it's the whole council. Not the council present.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Thanks a lot.
We were at consent items. Does anybody have a consent item? If not, we'll go to new business and I believe councillor Vasilakos and then we'll go from there.
Um I was just wondering if um and I believe uh Ms Thompson can give us an update on what happened with the garbage situation on the weekend. I know we had, there was a significant amount of discussion um on social media and we had some emails, so. Um maybe if we can just get an update on, you know, what happened operationally.
Uh thank you uh through your worship. So so yes, we did receive some um some feedback with respect to the garbage collection. Uh we did put out a media release this afternoon. We have apologized uh for the the situation. Um it was uh operational and we are endeavoring uh to uh make sure that that doesn't happen again. So we do apologize uh to the residents and to the tourists of the city of Stratford.
Thank you. Councillor Vasilakos, did you have anything else? Um councillor Ritzma.
A a couple and and through you to the director of infrastructure of. Mr Crinkler, I believe he's available. There he is there. Just a couple of questions. Uh first is around uh safety concerns specifically on Forman Ave. And I had a, an individual reach out to me with concerns of speed along the Forman Avenue and uh. Was interested in hearing about uh speed bumps of the positive and negative uh around speed bumps. And and the second piece, maybe I'll let you answer that and then I'll go to the second. Thank you.
Sure, through your worship. Um just talking towards uh Forman Ave specifically. There have been some frustrations and residents voiced their complaints for this area. And we have done some considerable analysis based on uh the feedback we have received. Uh including counts, analysis and uh recommendations um are somewhat summarized in the report that we brought previously to council. Uh in that the um the speeds that were encountered were within uh acceptable standards um from our end. So uh that report uh will be um coming back to council uh once again in August to uh discuss that further. In terms of the implementation of traffic calming ma- measures such as uh speed bumps. We do have policy in practice, uh past practice for how we might consider the implementation of such uh infrastructure. From a staff perspective, there is some hesitancy. Uh they do come with associated costs. Um there's additional operational maintenance considerations with it. Uh we're just concerned with the damage to fleet, damage to pavement structure. Uh and the road, so we do have some hesitancies. That being said, um actually just recently, the manager of Public Works and I have discussed. The implementation of a couple of pilot locations, just to get firsthand knowledge on what um. The impacts are for those traffic calming measures. Um so at least that we know that feedback. But that's still early stages for where and when that might be implemented.
Thank you. And and one further, if I may, your worship.
Yes.
Thank you. And and once again to Mr Crinkler. Uh with regards to the, this came up earlier, but I didn't, I didn't uh go further with it at that time with regards to the. Patching a schedule. Is there a schedule and uh is it still going on? I had a resident reach out. A resident on Douglas Street, uh particularly between Hunting and Avondale, and they're bikers and. They're saying they're having some challenges with regards to potholes. So the question is, are they continuing, is Public Works continuing to address? The potholes with the schedule.
Yeah, through your worship. Um so we're legislatively uh required to meet a minimum standards for road condition, uh the minimum maintenance standards. And and in those uh and following up with those standards, we do have um pothole maintenance crews that are out uh almost every day. Addressing the areas of non-compliance. Um some areas have a bit more roads that are deteriorated that um are just harder to uh to manage.
Thank you. And if I could um tolerate uh one more question, and this is to the director of community services, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. And and so uh Mr St Louis, just a question with regards to I had a resident reach out. And with the warmer weather, some of our our walkers and runners are out earlier in the day. And just wondering uh what's the earliest time that the washroom, public washrooms are available in our park system in particular?
Um through the chair, the uh the washroom facilities are open in our park system from nine AM and then they close at nine PM.
And I, and the reason why I bring that up is is once again through the the warm weather, people do try to get out and get their. Uh physical activity, whether it's running or jogging or combination of both, bicycling. Uh I'm just wondering, is there a a challenge with regards to opening them earlier than that?
Again, through the chair, um I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I could certainly research that tomorrow with our manager of facilities. And uh see if we can get them open earlier, at least in the parks.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Councillor Clifford and councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. I I'd like to uh thank the Stratford District Saddle Club. Uh for the successful uh Canada Day Parade and also the Kinsman Club for the fireworks. I I thought. It 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 went completely, it went uh extremely well and it was appreciated by the citizens of Stratford.
Thank you councillor Clifford. Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Uh back between two thousand six and two thousand and ten, there was a lot of excitement about. Finding building the multi-lane road between Stratford and New Hamburg. And at the time, there was several public information sessions that went on. As Chair of Public Works, I attended on behalf of the city. Uh and there is a lot of excitement about it. There's a lot of discussion with the, some of the neighboring municipalities. Uh with the uh with the government of the day in Toronto. Uh that being said, uh for the last eight years or so, it's sort of. Uh been dropped from the radar and general, from the radar in general. But I'd like to ask, and if you'd like it in the form of a motion, I will make that. That when you and the CEO are meeting with the Ministry of Transportation at A M O. In August, if uh that topic can be brought up and to see, see if it is uh. If it is a. Uh an item the government's interested in. And I ask because we're talking about Lorn Ave again and. We we've always talked about how Lorn Ave can improve when this extension went to. New Hamburg and has people that use Lorn Ave know that uh. It's uh, it may someday become a desperate situation. So how would you like me to approach it, Mr Chair?
Well, I think the C O and I can take that under advisement. We have requested our meeting with Minister Mulrooney. And the London Regional Staff from the M T O office out of London. I will note that uh this is similar to what they have done in previous times. They've done these great studies. They put it together and it sits somewhere in their capital planning and it currently is not in their five-year capital plan. Uh I just actually was a member of the Southwest Transportation Plan where it did not make the uh the top ten projects, but we'd be happy to raise it with them. Uh and I appreciate you bringing it forward at this time.
Thank you, your worship.
Anyone further? Councillor Henderson.
Last time it came, my understanding was it wasn't the start till twenty thirty-one and um I know it's been. Fifty-three years in the works because uh my aunt had to take her house down outside of Shakespeare because they were widening the boat. And I know we were quite shocked to learn that they wanna put five lanes um down Lorn Ave. Because we were expecting, I think, three lanes, like a continuous left-turning lane, so. And I'm understanding, what I remember is that each section of it will take five years, so. And that our mayor was working pretty hard on getting them to start in Stratford so that we could get our roads and things done. And that's what I remember from the last update.
Uh councillor Henderson, you're correct, and that was one of the reasons why I agreed to co-chair part of the Southwest Transportation Plan. Uh my argument has been that they should start uh in Stratford along Lorn Avenue and allow us to put a truck bypass in the city. Uh and that would also allow us to address the Lorn Ave Downey Street intersection. If we take undertake that work ourselves, we pay one hundred percent of the cost. If it is deemed to be a provincial truck route, uh they would pay basically ninety percent of the cost. Uh so it'd be nice to have some clarity from them, uh and I will continue to push that with Ms Thompson at A M O in August. And we can also follow up with a letter uh to Minister Mulrooney in advance with regard to our concern for a truck route in our city. Councillor Henderson.
Just a follow-up, and I know that you um are still um asking about the grand trunk, but if you're meeting with the ministers in August, just remind them that. There's many residents and our seniors are waiting for the grand trunk to um deck develop along with the Y M C A. And the university and other groups that are interested in it. So since we have a new government, to put a bug in their ear again and. Hopefully get this started. Continue on from what we've got that so far.
Yes. All right, is there anything further under new business? If not, we could take a motion to recess to reconvene in committee. Councillor Clifford, councillor Ritzma, all those in favor, that is carried. And our first committee is planning in heritage. Or sorry, infrastructure. It lists uh infrastructure, sorry, it lists planning and heritage uh infrastructure. Thanks councillor Vasilakos.
Thank you. Um I'll call the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee to order. Um councillor Beatty has um has provided regrets for this meeting. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, um we have, the subcommittee minutes are there for, so you can look at the um background discussion on the items today. We do not have any delegation scheduled and uh item number five is reported the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. And item five point one was the Stratford landfill public uh input invited June twenty twenty-two. There was a staff report associated with this and there is a staff work, or there is a subcommittee recommendation to council, consider any comments received. And that the report um be received for information. Councillor Gaffney, are you moving? Seconded by councillor Burbak, any discussion on that item or any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed if any. And that's carried. Um all the other items on the list are for the information of the committee and um. Item number seven is adjournment. Moved by councillor Ingram, seconded by councillor Burbak, all in favor. Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you very much, everyone.
I'll call this meeting of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee to order. Uh and councillor Beatty has provided regrets for this meeting. Item two, declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. See none. Uh attached our subcommittee minutes, uh item four, delegations not scheduled. Uh item five, report destination Stratford, five point one, destination Stratford update two. Moved by councillor Clifford, seconded by. Councillor Bunting. Uh any questions or clarifications needed? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item six, report of the supervisor of fleet. Uh item six point one, purchasing policy exemption for crane service body retrofit. Moved by councillor Ritzma, seconded by councillor Ingram. Does anybody have any questions? On that or in need of clarification? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item seven, report of the Director of Corporate Services. Uh item some point one, twenty twenty-two community grant appeal request. Moved by councillor Henderson, seconded by councillor Ritzma. Does anybody have any questions, councillor Vasilakos?
Um I'm just going to, I'm gonna speak against um this appeal, not because the service that they provide isn't useful. But because we have set forward a grant policy that has said that if. There's an organ, a large organization that gets the bulk of their funding from an upper level of government that they actually excluded from this program. And I'm saying that only because this organization gets like in the millions and millions and millions of dollars in funding from. The 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 province and um we have a grant program. To help smaller community organizations and and to provide services and. I I'm sometimes feel like um organizations that should be going to the province. To fund things that are within their mandate do then come to us and come to councils. And I think that just um, it just adds the burden to municipalities um repeatedly. And also, if we're going to have a policy on on grant applications and we have organizations that read that policy. And still actually apply for funds knowing that they do not qualify under that policy, that at some point we're going to have to um say no. So I am glad to see that subcommittee recommended a lower amount than requested and I am very much hoping that. Um in the future, we can um grandfather those funds out from them. So that we can then start to actually support some other organizations.
Thank you, councillor Ingram.
Thank you. I'd just like clarification because the staff recommendation was denial of the grant appeal request. And and the subcommittee recommendation was for approval. So what was the, was the motion for the subcommittee recommendation or the staff recommendation?
Thank you councillor Ingram, councillor uh. Who made that motion, councillor Henderson or councillor Ritzma?
The motion was for the subcommittee recommendation.
Uh thank you, thank you councillor Ingram. Uh councillor seven.
Is there a way um that we can have item eight, the delegation in regarding this, this item be heard before? We have a decision on it. It seems a little out of order.
We don't have a delegation here for this to be. Madam clerk.
Uh through the chair, it's my understanding we do not have a delegation for this item.
Uh the notes provided uh very accurately cover what she uh. Uh what she presented at uh subcommittee.
Just on point, just on a point of order, I think councillor seven is reading that that was for information of council and that was from committee meeting. It weren't scheduled to be here this evening.
Great.
That's right, yeah, thank you. And I, and if I, if I could just comment, I do support the emotion on the floor, I think. I might as well note that while I'm speaking here, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor. Opposed. Five opposed. Recommendation, the recommendation is defeated, madam clerk.
Uh through the chair, that is correct. When a, there is a tie vote, it results in a defeated motion.
I'll ask, did everyone vote? I only saw four hands and he approved. Madam clerk, would it be appropriate for me to do this, do the count again?
Uh through the chair, if there is concern that the uh hands were not visibly seen, then you could certainly recall the question.
And I'd like to, and can you keep your hands up until I ask you to put them down? All those in favor. Thank you, opposed. That is five opposed. Uh it is defeated. Thank you, Madam Court. Does anybody want to make another motion on this item? No, then I'll move to item some point two, electrical procurement, City of Stratford. Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Seven. Uh any questions on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed to Betty, that's Carrie. Item some point three, treasure statement for development charges and Parkland Reserve Funds twenty twenty one. Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Vassalakos. Does anyone have any questions on that item? Uh Counselor Burbak?
Thank you. Yeah, just a question about the Parkland Reserve Funds and um how projects are chosen to draw from that reserve fund. I'm just curious if we have a process for that.
Uh Madam Director?
Thank you through the chair. The legislation drives what projects are eligible, so when we go through the budget process. Um that is a function that staff consider the available funding source for any projects and then would propose it at that time. I don't know that there's necessarily a got a hierarchy or something like that, but it would certainly become part of the budget conversation.
Okay, thank you. Just a follow up to that, too. What if there are no proposals in the budget that would meet the criteria for that fund? Could I, could another project be proposed?
Um through the chair, absolutely. Um that could, that could, as long as it was, it was felt within the legislated mandates of the Parkland Dedication Reserve, for sure. Um more more often than not, in my experience, is that the funds would just stay there until another appropriate project came along, but it's absolutely a possibility for sure.
Thank you. Uh any other questions? Uh see none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed to Betty, and that's Carrie. Item seven point four, long term debt. Uh and I see this is a reconvene item. Uh moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Ritzma. Um does anybody have any questions, Counselor Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask the director with with what we're doing here. If and I did call her earlier to give her some warning. So uh I'd like to know what what are a long term or our debt is now and what are proposed long term debt will be at the end of twenty twenty two approximately.
Um through the chair. Um so at the end of twenty twenty two, based on our proposed repayment. Uh of previously existing debt, we're sitting at about forty eight and a half million dollars. Um it's declining at a rate of just over six million a year, that particular, I'll say, block of debt. Um and then with the proposed uh uh debt that's been approved up until now. Um that brings the total up to about seventy two point four, but we're only looking at advancing an additional five point three million at this point. So by the end of twenty twenty two, should this uh go forward as as presented, we'd be sitting at around fifty three point eight million in total.
Thank you. Any uh Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that report. Uh the the only comment I have, I I think council has been extremely successful bringing down our debt load because. I've been the chair for a while and we have a a brand new chair now, but I all the time that when I came back and council and what we have now, it's. I believe it's been quite successful, so I thank everybody for that.
Thank you, Counselor Clifford. Any other questions or clarifications? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed to any, that's Carrie. Uh item eight, eight point one is for information of committee. Eight point two, there's uh some Stratfords of the world committing minutes attached. Item nine. Are you moving uh? Are you moving uh adjournment, Counselor Seven?
I just had a question regarding seven point item seven point one. Um I'm just wondering if it will be coming back to be filed or what the process moving forward for that item will be.
Good question, uh Madam Court.
Oh, through the chair, yes, that is a great question. Um so the city's procedural bylaw provides that when a motion at a committee meeting is defeated and no other motion is made. That the clerk is able to list a motion to file the item on the next regular council agenda. And a motion to file means to take no action. So the next council meeting will be held on August eighth, and under the reports of the standing committees, we will list a motion to file for consideration of council.
Thank you. Uh. If there's nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ingram, all those in favor. That's Carrie. Thanks, everybody.
I'd like to call the order the Planning and Heritage Committee, and Counselor BD provides regrets for this meeting. Um are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? I believe um Counselor Burbak has declared a conflict with item five point one. Is that correct, Counselor Burbak? Thank you. So noted. Moving on, uh there are uh subcommittee minutes uh from June thirtieth attached. Now, item number four, delegations four point one. Uh there is a motion that the delegation of Lorena McKennitt with respect to the proposal exemption for bylaw. One five nine dash two zero zero four for the address of thirty five Waterloo Street North, be heard and mover for that. Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos, and seconded by Counselor Ingram, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And we'll allow the clerk to bring this candidate to the meeting. And as we prepare here, I'll remind all these delegations as we move forward, they'll have a five minute uh time limit. Uh as they presented previously. There's Lou, there's Lorena, if you could unmute. And just a reminder, there you go, not quite.
Uh through the chair, Lorena, you are muted.
Yes. There you go. I think you're set. And just a reminder, Ms. McKenna, that you have five minutes and I'll I'll let you know at four minutes. Uh if uh you haven't completed uh that you have a minute remaining. Okay, so the floor is yours. Oh, you are still muted. I'm sorry, you're still muted. Through the clerk, I'm wondering if we could move forward to four point two and see if we can get uh Ms. McKenna.
Um through the chair, I believe uh Ms. McKenna is going to try calling into the meeting, and we're going to see if we can get the sound to work that way.
Thank you.
I wonder if she turns off her video. Sometimes it works better for people if they turn off the videos.
Lorena, can you hear us? Try talking.
I'm talking right now.
There you go.
I can hear you.
You are ready to go. Thank you.
I I apologize for the inconvenience and I'm at home under the weather. Uh so um I'll begin again. Uh your worship and counselors, thank you for your patience with that. And thank you for allowing me to appear before you today. Um as outlined in the agenda, I'm in the process of applying for sign variance for the Fall Staff Family Center. Starting in February of this year, we were able to consult with and work with the staff to make an application for a change sign variance. Which incorporated five signs and which were reviewed and passed by the Planning and Heritage Subcommittee in June. This application was then reviewed by the Planning and Heritage Committee. And referred to the Heritage Stratford Advisory Committee on June fourteenth. This committee's recommendation was to reduce the number of signs we requested from five to three, and it's on this point that I'm appearing today. As there was not an opportunity to appear before the advisory committee uh to present our request. I wanted to ensure that before council votes on this matter, it had the opportunity to hear an abbreviated presentation of why I feel. Why I feel five signs would be three. Um much of what I'm about to touch on is captured in my letters sent to the Planning and Heritage Committee on May twenty fourth. In this letter, I set out the diversity of our tenants, fee for service users and other organizations in their respective needs for signage. Sometimes there are multiple activities or events to be promoted at the same time. For example, in June, there would have been a desire for signage for National Indigenous Day. And the Here for Now Theater Company, who is currently presenting their twenty twenty two season in our community room. And for whom sixty percent of their audience is from outside of the community. When we review the calendar year, we can see that there may be several overlapping occasions like this one. So what our proposal uh uh was uh to uh to extrapolate on this was that there would be three locations of a larger signs. And two locations for a smaller signs. The three, the three larger signs would be along the front. The two smaller ones would be on one on William Street and one on Elizabeth Street. And how we could envision this happening, taking Here for Now, for example. Here for Now uh would have an advertising banner. I mean, it wouldn't be necessary perhaps as less so now. But it would be a large one in the front, and that one would be removed, and two small signs on Wi- on William Street and Elizabeth. Would be there primarily to direct any people who are unfamiliar with where the Fall Staff Family Center was. Um in the occasion, let's say, with the indigenous uh National Indigenous Day, we could see a sign like that going up for a week. Uh or two around that date just to remind people, okay, and then being taken down. So the the there would be a a rotation of these signs. There would be sometimes they would, there would be no signs at all. Other times, a few occasions, there may be as many as five at one time, but not for what I would see as extended periods of time. Um. Um integral to this fine variance is the is the sense that we envision um the fence to be like a living canvas. Not only of of signage, of supporting different organizations or some of our tenants. But we envision it being a defense being woven with some uh vines and perhaps some artwork. You will see some artwork uh that was put there by the upper tens when they hosted the Children's Water Festival. Um we consulted with the neighbors in March and uh and there seemed to be. Uh agreement of of our vision of approaching things this way. Of course, there were some. Okay, questions about uh the details. Uh but we wanted to make sure that we would not have um an electronic sign. I think everyone was in agreement with that. And I think it was also in the spirit of the heritage uh aspect of the building, which of course I I designated not long after I purchased it in two thousand. I do want to thank the heritage uh uh the advisory committee for their feedback as someone who has really supported heritage buildings and neighborhoods. So um in in conclusion, uh I we're just requesting to be considered to accommodate five signs rather than three.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that presentation, and and this item will come up um later in the in the uh meeting. Thank you very much. Form four point two, we're moving on to a delegation request from the Huron Perth Healthcare Alliance. And there is a motion that the follow what following representatives of the Huron Perth Healthcare Alliance be heard regarding item six point one of this agenda. Heritage Stratford Recommendation Regarding the Intent to Designate eighty six John Street South and ninety John Street South. Under Part Four, Section Twenty Nine of the Ontario uh Heritage Act. And presented with the Andrew Williams, President and Chief Executive Officer. John Wilkinson, Vice Chair of the Huron Perth Healthcare Alliance, Board of Directors, and Francesco Sabatini. Manager, Facilities Management Projects. So mover to hear that. Thank you, Counsel Burbak, and seconded by Counselor Ingram. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, and we'll have those individuals join our meeting. And once again, I'll remind our presenters that we are with a five minute time limit. And I'll let you know when we're at four, so um I will turn it over to unmute yourself and go ahead. Whoever is going to take the floor first, I see uh Mr. Williams there, if you want to take the floor or designate.
Uh thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. I will be uh taking the floor on this issue, and uh we'll start by passing on uh John. I don't see him on, he's on vacation currently, so we weren't sure he was going to be able to join us. Um we really appreciate the opportunity to uh present to you again tonight. As you know, on June thirtieth, we had the opportunity to. Uh present in detail uh on this topic, and and as you know, we're respectfully requesting that the motion. Uh to designate our properties not be uh considered during the uh discussion, and and I think this is really important that we reiterate this, that. You know, we we're not here because we oppose um heritage, and we don't uh we're we're not here because we oppose the great work of Heritage Stratford Advisory Committee. We absolutely do. Uh it's just in the context of this specific issue. Um the uh the Avancrest uh former Avancrest Hospital, uh we don't feel that the decision is a responsible one. Um you know, as we said, uh our sole mandate is to contribute to the health and well being um of our community. Um by making decisions that allow us to invest in healthcare proactively, and and we've been able to do that over a hundred and thirty years. And certainly a significant player in that has been the city of of Stratford with the tremendous support that you provided. And we're now at another opportunity where we feel we have a tremendous um uh opportunity in front of us to develop the Avancrest. Uh property in a way that will benefit the community into the future. Uh all our information is in the package, you've seen it, but we're here specifically because there were some questions asked of us at the June thirtieth meeting that we would like to address. Uh one was around the facade and whether we had undertaken a specific cost on preserving just the facade. Uh for the project, and we had not. Uh we had asked our cost consultants Marshall Murray to give us an opinion of probable costs on bringing the building. Back to a a point where it could start to be developed for rental, and as you know, that cost was given to us in the neighborhood of twenty four million. But it did not um address the issue of a standalone facade. We went back to them following the June thirtieth meeting. And received a cost today in the neighborhood of four point nine million dollars to protect uh the facade of the original hospital. Um as uh as you can anticipate, that would be um an insurmountable cost for any developer to um undertake. Particularly in light of what we are looking at doing with the property. Uh and added to that, um those of you who know the property, you know, the building is right in the middle of it, and putting a facade there not only would be cost prohibitive. But would uh very much limit uh any development opportunities. Uh and on that point, we also went back out to some developers that have undertaken heritage projects. Um and have talked to a number of developers, and we've shared those comments previously with the committee. But almost all of them um involve projects that have developer endorsement ahead of time. With projects that are uh clearly a green lighted to move forward. Uh with costs uh incurred as a result of the heritage components spread out over either tenants or occupants of of the. with costs incurred as a result of the heritage components spread out over either tenants or occupants of the property, something that we don't have. We've had no development interest at all and in fact have been told that the only way really that developers will partner with us is with a clean site. On that point, we are in conversations now. We're excited with some potential opportunities. No guarantees, but council should know that with the building there, it is a major barrier to us and a major barrier to our vision for advancing healthcare. As I said right at the beginning, we very much value the role that Heritage Stratford plays and in an ideal world, we would not be here opposing this motion, but we feel in the interest of healthcare, in the interest of our mandate to invest our resources responsibly in advancing health and wellness of this community, that removing the building and developing that site proactively is the right way to go. So, you know, happy to answer any questions, but I did want to circle back with that specific piece of information because Counselor Bunting did specifically ask us at that meeting if we had looked at separate costs for preserving the facade of the original Avoncrest Hospital.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. And as you know, this item will come up later in the agenda. Counselor Seven.
I have a quick question or a question for Dr. Williams. I'm just wondering, is the intent to sell the land or is it to partner and develop it if the building were no longer there? Just want some clarification.
Our intention is to maintain the land and partner and develop it.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, thank you to both Mr. Sabatini and Mr. Williams for joining us this evening. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4.3, delegation request by Heritage Stratford. And there is a motion that Cambria Ravenhill, the, on behalf of Heritage Stratford Committee, be heard regarding the item 6.1 of this agenda, Heritage Stratford Recommendation Regarding the Intent to Designate 86 John Street South and 90 John Street South Under Part IV, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and a mover for such. Thank you very much, Counselor Ingram. Second by Counselor Gaffney. All in favor? And that's unanimous. And thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Ravenhill, and the floor is yours. And you have five minutes and I will let you know when there's four.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, wonderful.
Thank you. My name's Cambria Ravenhill. I'm the current Chair of Heritage Stratford and I'd love to talk to a couple of points that were raised by the HPA this evening. I'm very happy that they did look into some of the information that we had asked of them and I wanted to just cover a couple of points that are of concern to Heritage Stratford. Obviously, our mandate is to preserve heritage in Stratford and we look at preserving significant heritage resource in this city. And this building, Avoncrest, is one of the last great buildings there is in the city that doesn't have heritage protection. Specifically, we want to speak to the fact that the HPA are the owners of this property, but they're also really custodians of a significant piece of heritage within Stratford. And I wanted to talk to their mandate of preservation, particularly around some of the provincial guidelines regarding preservation of historical buildings. The RFS that was put out by them way back at the start of 2020 was looking to get interested in a new iconic building dedicated to providing health-related services. And I believe that hasn't changed. But specific to this property, the provincial policy of 2020 for buildings states clearly that any significant built heritage resources should be wisely conserved and managed. And obviously, the destruction of this building doesn't follow that mandate. But we as a committee believe that it could because we wanted to look to the idea of adaptive reuse of heritage buildings. The site itself has quite a few buildings on it and I think our committee would agree that most of those buildings are really an impediment to developing the site right now in the way that the hospital would like. So we have focused primarily on Avoncrest, which is the original hospital building from 1891. It was the one that was paid for in cash by the ladies of Stratford and it is, as I said, an iconic building, an important building. And we believe that the building or just the facade could be incorporated in an adaptive reuse in a modern way. So that means the buildings you see in Toronto that have a facade on the street and a great big condo behind it, that's adaptive reuse. There's a lot of examples in Guelph, Cambridge, Kitchener, Waterloo, and London of reuse of heritage buildings. There's a couple that I can think of right now in Stratford. They would include Jenny Kraut Center and more recently the Bradshaw Lofts, which are very modern reworkings of industrial buildings in this city. So this is very common for developers to do. They literally do it all the time. And I can name at least four architects in Stratford that work on these kind of projects. So it's not an out-of-the-ordinary ask for developers to work with an existing heritage building. And our feeling is that this is too important a building to simply knock down because a developer wants a clean slate. You know, there's that saying, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We're aware of throwing our heritage out with the developer. We don't have to do that from the point of view of Heritage Stratford. We would like a greater consideration from the hospital to incorporate some parts of Avoncrest, the whole building, or as I said, the facade, into their plans for the site. And if they were looking for an iconic building, then I think they'd really get something if they reworked it. I do know that it is a, it's a, it's a difficult site to develop, but it has a lot of potential. It is exciting and let me reiterate that everybody on Heritage Stratford, everybody on this call is a stakeholder in the success of the hospital and the success of their programs and their expansion to support Stratford. So I'd really like to think about this as not just about costs and limits on development, but opportunity. And I will mention, I can't help it, but in 1967, there was a proposal that City Hall be demolished and it was for exactly the same reasons. A crappy old building that costs too much to keep and it would be replaced by a hotel, which of course did not happen. But people still shudder to think that there was a, could be a Travelodge sitting in Market Square today. So I would like the same extension of preservation thinking and thoughtfulness and protections for a very, very important building for the people of Stratford when we look at this proposal for designation and some of the things we could do on a go-forward basis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as you know, this item will come up later in our meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Seven, did I see your hand?
Yeah, thank you. I did have a question for Ms. Ravenhill. I'm just wondering if the designation were put in place, would that still allow for development to the extent of like repurposing the building and things like that? I'm assuming that is the case, but if you could just speak to that a little bit?
In the case of designation, alterations to the building would go through a permanent application process, but it does not preclude these alterations and differences being made. So for instance, our committee does a lot of work in terms of adding new accessibility to existing buildings, for instance, and that will, that can change them. We do a lot of work with people who are updating buildings. This would be absolutely no different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ravenhill.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to item five, report of the municipal law enforcement officer. In 5.1, there is a staff recommendation that Planning and Heritage Committee received the subsequent report and on page 20, they do provide some options. And so those are options with regards to, from the staff recommendations that council can entertain and/or bring something else for. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. So I would like to move the Heritage Stratford Recommendation of Three Signs on the Property, please.
Okay, so thank you very much. So that's option B, if I'm correct. Thank you. And a second for that, Counselor Vasilekos, discussion. Counselor Henderson.
I really can't support this motion at this time. I remember just a couple of months ago, the recycling place on the corner, Romeo and Lauren, wanted several signs and we wouldn't even allow them to and that's a huge building on the corner and they had to go with the compromise. So I'm, and I, I've heard that there was consultation with neighbors. Usually those comments are included in the report. I haven't seen anything about that, what the comments were. There already are three signs on the fence and I don't know if the two blue and white ones were ever endorsed and allowed to be put there. They're like a blue and white sign. So there's two of them there. There's the families, you know, the family center sign, of course, and now they want to add five more signs. I just don't think it's fair for the other businesses or people in town that like to put signs up. We have a bylaw for a reason and yes, we lots of times will exempt it. You know, I could maybe see adding one more sign in the middle. I mean, they've got that, you know, the beautiful sign that tells them and then they've got the fish sign. Well, that's another thing they've got up there is that huge fish display, which is excellent that, you know, tells people about, you know, watch what you're putting down the drains because goes to the river and affects fish, which is really important. And we have several buildings in town that have lots of activity going on. And I mean, the Fall Staff Center is always busy when you go by. I mean, I think it's just great. I could go with, and I remember when it came, I said this at the last meeting years ago, and they wanted two or three then and it was turned down and there was good reasons for it. And now they've come back and want five. I could go with maybe one more. I think it would kind of offset the one where the fish are and then they've got those two blue signs on each end, the blue and white signs. And then they've got the family Fall Staff up the other end. I could see maybe one in the middle there, but not five more. I just, I'm sorry, I just can't support that.
Thank you. Other comments? And Counselor Henderson, the option that's on the floor is that the sign variance for three additional ground signs.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize that. So three more, it's still canceled.
Counselor Gaffney, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm on a heritage level, I'm not going to support this motion because the council of the day, five or six years ago, agreed with Heritage at the time and said that one sign on the corner, because they wanted two at the time and they wanted one great big one that I am enforcement suggested was the size of a highway billboard. And one of the reasons it was recommended to the council of the day was that this is a designated building and by putting a bunch of signs up at people's eye level, then people walking down the street and even driving by can't enjoy the heritage facade of that building. So that's why, why I won't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vasilekos and Counselor Seven.
I took a walk along there. I walk that route quite often and the fence height actually falls below the building. So you actually, right now, it's a basically old chain link fence that is along there and I don't see how, I agree with the three cents. I don't see how the three signs would detract from the building because simply the fence is below, below the height of the building. When you look certainly from the street level on either side of the street, so the cars as well. So I don't view them as being like obstructing the building itself. They don't.
Counselor Seven and then Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that initially I would have, you know, been comfortable, I think, supporting five and then, you know, we got the input we wanted from Heritage Stratford and I think that's important and, you know, so I definitely support the motion for three signs. I think we've received input from Heritage Stratford and we're receiving it and I think I'm just going to go along with their recommendation and I think it is a compromise as well, so.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. And some of the comments from the discussion at the Heritage Stratford meeting where you were discussing this proposal was that there are more signs currently on the fence now than what they are requesting. And as Counselor Vasilekos pointed out, when you are walking or driving along, you can actually see the building above the fence line. It is not high enough that it will block sightlines, whether you're in your car or you're walking or you're biking. They also recognize the evolution of the use of the property. And so I'll just leave it at that. They did, they actually did discuss all of these items.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. I see Counselor Clifford and then Counselor Henderson.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the fish signs. Like the fish signs, are they up all the time or is that one of the signs they're talking about? When I drive, when I drive, I'm confused. What is a sign and what is like art or it like is art a sign? Not to get this off my question.
And that is a good question. I'm not sure if Mr. Frye is available to answer that. There he is, Mr. Dewear. Go ahead.
The Chair, yeah. The fish would be considered artwork in this case. We wouldn't consider those signs based on the definition of the sign in our bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Dewear. Counselor Henderson.
So since we've started this discussion, there's obviously been signs still continued to be put up or banners or different things. If the three sign promotion gets passed, are there still going to be banners and other things hanging off the chain link fence? I'm just curious because, you know, they were approved for one. They've got three. I don't know when they got their approval for the other two and they've continued to, you know, have banners and different things just put up. And not that I'm adapting to it. It's just that they're breaking the law, right? And I mean, because you know, you drive by and look at some, I mean, seeing some that were kind of controversial, but it sounds like they're not going to be having anything like that, so that's fine. But I just, it's just that we don't allow it at any other business. I mean, just recently, like I said, the one at the corner of London, they wanted to put up and I didn't see anything wrong with them because they were a few bitches and they could have put a sign on this side and a sign on that side, but we didn't allow it on their fence. And it's not heritage for sure. Like I just, I'm shocked in the neighborhood. I'm not sure, I guess, how I would feel if I was living in a house looking across and I guess it'd be nice if signs are changed all the time, but sometimes some of the banners and things that are up there aren't hanging very well, right? So if you have actually designated areas and that would make it look a lot neater for sure, but are they going to continue to put up banners and other things also?
My understanding, Counselor Henderson, that this, this motion would give direction to the municipal law enforcement officer. That's my understanding. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. So the banner would be part, one of the signs that would be approved through the Heritage Stratford Recommendation. It's the long horizontal one that they said would be in the middle. That would be the banner sign. So they would be able to have that, you know, frame. Think of a picture frame. They would have a frame and they could change the banner content out as they saw fit. And I just, I just want to remind everyone as well that the property owner did actually provide something in a written notice to all property owners in the area and they did not receive any comments or concerns whatsoever. And that was with their proposal for five signs.
Is there anything further? So there is a motion on the floor with regards to this item and it is that staff that the Planning and Heritage Committee received the subsequent report and with the option B, Heritage Stratford Advisory Committee Recommendation that the sign variance for three additional signs located on municipal property adjacent to 35 Waterloo Street North be approved. Any further discussion? Counselor Henderson.
So does this mean that, for instance, the business that was at the corner, Romeo and Lauren, would now be able to come back and say, can I have the extra signs? Like, is this going to open up a floodgate of people that are going to come back now and say, we asked for extra signs, we couldn't get it? I mean, we've seen, we just went through Food Basics, wanted to put a sign up, and staff didn't recommend that, and we turned that over. And then we had two other businesses on Ontario Street, same thing, and we changed that. Seven-Eleven just came, and we changed that. And so now we're saying you can have, well, this person will have eight signs, and so I know it's a great building. I know they do a lot of wonderful things in the community, but I'm just theory of the fox. Does this mean that people that have already came and asked for two and three signs are able to come back now and say, well, you did it for them? Can I have it now?
I'll turn to the clerk for that.
So through the chair, so it's my understanding that any member of the public could request a sign variance with respect to the process to be followed. Staff would need to review when the original request was first considered in order to write direction on how best to bring that item forward. I would also just turn it over to the chief building official if there's any additional comments he would like to provide at this time.
Mr. DeWeird.
I have no further comments. It would be at, you know, be at the discretion of council. None of this would ever set precedence.
Thank you. Mayor Matheson.
My question is, I guess, to Mr. DeWeird. I know the Counselor Vasilakos and Counselor Ingram mentioned sign being below the vista of seeing the building. Has that ever been taken into consideration when looking at the recycling sign out at Lauren and Romeo, or sandwich board signs downtown, or any other approvals that we've given in the past?
I don't believe specifically that that's been looked at through, through the chair. We do have parameters within the sign by that, by law that do permit certain heights for ground signs, and that's what we've determined that these frames that will hold the banners would be considered as a, as a ground sign. So as long as it follows the parameters of, of the, uh, the sign by law with regards to the ground sign, those could be adjusted higher or lower on there. In this case, the applicant has asked for those ground signs on the, uh, the chain length on the forty-five at the intersections would be on that low section of chain length, so would be fairly low on the, uh, on the horizon, I guess.
Anything further? Counselor Vasilakos, thank you.
And, and my comments were strictly on that heritage aspect of, like, I, I mean, there's a whole section of the signs and the bylaw and what size they are and what height they are. But my comment was about the heritage aspect and being able to see the heritage building, and that was just a response specific to that. Not necessarily, do we do that for other buildings on, from the sign by law perspective?
Thank you, Counselor Vasilakos. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you, and, and I would concur with Counselor Vasilakos's comments with respect to the height and the vista. But for, for Mr. DeWeird, related to the sign variance application at the corner of Romeo and Lauren, if I recall correctly, we actually modified their request as well. We permitted some of the signs. We didn't permit others. So we actually down, downgraded, if you will, the number of signs that they were requesting for that application as well. Am I correct?
I believe, I believe that is the case, or a number of signs requested there, and in that case, we reduced the numbers, our council reduced the number of signs that were approved.
Yes, thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, it has been moved uh, counsel, uh, Mayor Matheson, I'm sorry.
Well, I would, I would note that we did not permit three additional signs. I'm sure that the wrecking yard asked their neighbors out at the landfill in the area whether they had any issues with the signs, and they probably didn't either. And I don't think the signs on the fence out there detracted from the heritage value of the neighborhood, and if we're not going to look after our heritage neighborhoods and our eighty-two designated properties in the city, we probably shouldn't get too worked up about iron recycling yards and our truck route on the south end of the city, but I just want to point out the, the inconsistency as we treat businesses, and I do want to remind everyone that we had a very large sign blitz in the spring with regard to sandwich boards for downtown merchants, and there was a lot of complaints about that. And be prepared that we have now shown that we are flexible in our heritage core with regard to the number of signs and the size that we're going to permit.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that this, this is actually not in the designated core. This is a designated building. So it's a part four designation of the Heritage Act, not a part five. All of the downtown businesses within the core would be a part five.
I'm aware of that, but if we're going to use the heritage argument that it doesn't detract from the building, then I think you need to use it on all heritage buildings, whether it's part four or part five, and it shouldn't matter where it's located in the city. Those businesses made the same level of investment as other people, and their livelihoods determine how their families and businesses and employees get paid also, so.
Anything further? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? Please leave your hand up. And that is defeated. And let the record show that Council Werrback did not participate in that vote. And so I'm looking once again to council. Counselor Henderson.
I think since they've got the fish art display up there, that it would be in taking that they could have one more sign. So I'd make a motion that they could have one more sign, and it would sort of offset the fish thing, and it would be offsetting the two blue and white ones they have. So that's my motion.
So there's a motion then to have one additional sign. Is that your motion, Counselor Henderson? Thank you, a seconder for that motion. Do not see a, a seconder. There's Counselor Seven will second that motion. Counselor Ingram, discussion, thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to caution us on confusing or mixing signs with public art. I, I don't, I don't think we need to offset public art with signage or offset signage with public art. I just I really want us to keep public art separate.
And I'll remind, just to pick up on that, that the chief building official did indicate that was art, not a sign. I'll go to Counselor Clifford.
On, on, I'd like to ask our chief building official, is anyone, if I want a brown, brown heating and cooling, if I want to put up public art, I can put up any public art I want, or like, I, I'm just confused about who and what public art can go up and in what location.
Thank you, Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, through, through the chair. Public art is, is not considered a sign provided that it doesn't advertise a business. So if, if brown cooling and heating decided to put up a mural and put a truck that had brown cooling and heating on it, that, that would likely be deemed as a sign because you'd be advertising for a business versus just a, a picture, or artwork, or in this case, fish.
Any other questions? Comments? There is a motion on the floor to add one additional sign. And I believe that is correct. If I look at the clerk, yes.
So through the chair, yes, it's my understanding the motion on the floor is that a sign variance be approved for it, one ground floor signed. I would just request clarification on whether there are any conditions to be imposed. As outlined in the Planning and Heritage Subcommittee recommendation, it was provided that the applicant enters into an encroachment agreement with the city for the sign and fence installed on city property, and that proper design documents be provided with the sign permit application. So just want to clarify if that is to be incorporated or not.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson, and the seconder, Counselor Seven, your support of that. Yes, thank you for that, madam clerk. Anything else? Seeing none, I will call the question on the motion on the floor. All in favor? Two in favor? Opposed? And that's defeated. Anything further from council? And I will move this item. We will leave this item and move to item six point one, and and we'll allow the clerk to deal with this at our next meeting. Thank you. Moving on to item six point one, and the item is Report of Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. And I'm not sure, Ms. Thompson, you're going to speak to this prior to? Go ahead, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So this report, so there's two reports before you. There is the original report with respect dated June the thirtieth from the, the manager of planning that sets out the objective, which is to provide Heritage Stratford's recommendation regarding the proposed intent to designate eighty-six John Street South and ninety John Street South under part four of the Ontario Heritage Act. At the subcommittee meeting, I did go through that report and outlined the, the four properties that are part of the Heritage Stratford designation request. Heritage Stratford has initiated this designation request, and the property owner of the Huron Perth Health Alliance objects to the designation under part four of the act, and a letter setting out their concerns was attached at that time. In the report, it also talks about the fact that the property was on the non-designated municipal registry that the planner is going to talk about later on in this meeting under a separate report with, with respect to that entire registry. We do know that Huron Perth Health Alliance has opted out of the municipal registry with respect to this property. In the background report originally presented at subcommittee, the information from Heritage Stratford as to the property history was presented as well as the, um, the background with respect to the property. The planning framework is set out in the property, and that planning framework is included in the report, and it outlines the Planning Act, the provincial policy statement, the city of Stratford's official plan, and the Ontario Heritage Act. And there is more information with respect to those in the, in the report. And when putting forward a proper property for designation under the Ontario Heritage Act, there are four pieces of information required under the regulation. It is a description of the property. It is a statement of cultural value or interest, the description of the heritage attributes, and the property identifier. So those that have been provided by Heritage Stratford and are for your consideration. At the subcommittee meeting, there was discussion with respect to the, the staff recommendation that is before you. There was a request for additional information, and that has been provided with the additional report for your consideration, including outlining some options for council with respect to the Heritage Stratford designation, and those are included in the report. That is the information, and you have heard the previous designations this evening with respect to the property owner in Heritage Stratford. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. If I may, I'm wondering to simplify the process here, if we could, there is a staff recommendation, but I'm wondering if we could have somebody start by just simply receiving the, uh, the follow-up report, and then move on to the next item. Then we've received the report. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney and Counsel Werrback. All in favor of receiving the report titled Follow-Up Report to PLA two-two dash zero-two be received? All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's been received. So thank you very much. Moving then down further, um, open up the floor for discussion and/or a recommendation with regards to designation. Counselor Henderson.
I believe it was at the last council meeting, and it was asked before Heritage Stratford worked very hard, and they got, you know, several hundred places in town that they wanted to be put on the non-designated list, and then they whittled that down to a certain amount, and it was asked if somebody decided that they didn't want to be on the non-designated list, that they could have their name taken off. So now here we have the hospital or Huron Perth Alliance saying that they want to opt out of the non-designated list, but we're going to turn around and say, no, you have to be designated. So I don't understand that process because I thought the owners of the land had the right to say no. And I, I mean, I agree, it's a beautiful building. I used to live on the corner of John West, or I mean, I grew up, you know, that area, but when I hear that it's going to be over a million for the roof, and twenty-four million to even look at just the Avon Craft Park trying to keep it up and all the others, um, and we so badly.
All do is ask the C A O to, um, to respond to your question. Thank you very much. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you. So if I understand the question correctly, it is for the non-designated municipal registry, can a property owner opt out? And that is the final decision on it. So I, I will advise that our practice here in Stratford has been that under, for a designation of a property under part four, it has been the practice not to designate under part four if the owner of the property objected to the, the heritage designation. That is a similar approach that staff are taking with respect to the municipal registry. So they have identified the properties. They have consulted with Heritage Stratford and the property owners. The property owners that were initially identified on that municipal heritage registry were given the, the information and the ability to what we call opt out. So there were some property owners that decided to opt out, but ultimately, with respect to the municipal heritage registry, it is council's decision. So even though a property owner may, may opt, wish to opt out, ultimately, it is council's decision with respect to the municipal heritage registry, just like it is council's decision under part four for the heritage designation. Even if the owner did object, council could still decide to designate the property, and there is an appeal mechanism that the, the public or the property owner can follow with respect to a decision of council to, to designate.
Just a reminder that in the subcommittee, that the owners did indicate that they would work with Heritage Stratford to retain certain artifacts that were, that were of, of significance and of, of still of value to retain. I see Counselor Clifford, go ahead. You have your hand, Counselor Clifford, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that council thought issued, that council not issue an intent to designate eighty-six and ninety John Street South under part, under part four, it's section twenty-nine of the Ontario Heritage Act.
Thank you, a seconder for that. Counselor Henderson, are you seconding that? Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Please leave your hand up. Opposed, if any? Two opposed, and that is carried. Okay, moving forward. Item seven is Report of the Planner. Item seven point one, City of Stratford Municipal Heritage Registry Non-designated Properties Proposed for Inclusion. And I believe, Ms., uh, the planner is there, Ms. Ivanique, go ahead. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Through the chair, you have a report before you that provides background information regarding Heritage Stratford's resolution recommending thirty properties to be added as non-designated properties of cultural value or interest to the city's municipal heritage register under section twenty-seven-three of the Ontario Heritage Act. The report before you identifies thirty properties for phase three and sets out a process to implement this, this objective. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have regarding this initiative and the process through the chair.
Thank you very much. Counselor Henderson.
Yes, I, I watched the meeting, and I thought this was an interesting idea that that the owners have to confirm before they're put on the list. So since there's only thirty of them, I know that might be some extra work, but it could be sent out to them. And if they don't respond, then staff would have to contact them and get their response, whether they wanted to opt in or out. And like, it was raised at, at the subcommittee, from what I remember was people go away on holidays, or I mean, we've had mail go to the wrong address before and stuff, that if they don't hear from them, that they would reach out to them. Is that a possibility?
Ms. Ivanique, go ahead. Ms. Ivanee, go ahead.
That is definitely a possibility. Our current practice is to, as discussed, do a bit of that work upfront to provide people that opportunity to opt out. We can also extend the opt-out period before a final list is recommended. And I've had some discussions with heritage planners from other cities where they've done a sixty-day opt-out. So those are both options that we can consider and feedback that I've taken into account.
I just think it's a good thing when it's the last stage. That's just an idea then.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney.
I'll move the staff recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A second or for that. Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Discussion. Counselor Henderson.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment that staff will reach out to anyone that they haven't heard back from.
Is that clear enough to the planner? Yes, thank you. And to the mover and the second or are you in support of that amendment?
Well, I'd like to ask Counselor Ingram, through you, Mr. Chair, if that works for the Heritage Committee.
Counselor Ingram.
Yeah, the Heritage Committee's intent was to reach out to everyone who was about to be put on the list. So I don't, I don't think they'd have any issue with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram, then I'm okay with it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and a second or as well. Looking at the clerk is the, are you okay with the recommend or the motion that's on the floor?
Through the chair, yes, I am.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any? And I believe that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, eight point one is subcommittee discussion. There's none. Eight point two, there is some minutes there as well from you from Heritage Stratford from April the twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And the last item is a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram. Thank you very much. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Counsel, reconvene, I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item fifteen point one is declarations of pecuniary interest made at standing committees. Are there any declarations made at standing committees to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Yes, five point one from the Planning and Heritage Committee.
Thank you.
Moving to item fifteen point two, committee reports, the first item was fifteen point two point one from the Planning and Heritage Committee and that was related to item five point one. As that motion was defeated, I would respectfully request to be able to list the motion to file on the August eighth council agenda if that's agreeable for council here. So moving to item fifteen point two point two, that's from the Finance and Labor Relations Committee and that was item seven point four, long-term debt update.
Goodbye, Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Vassalakos. Discussion. Not all in favor? Opposed, if any? It's carried.
Item fifteen point three is reading of the bylaws and there are two bylaws listed for consideration being bylaw eleven point six, the borrowing bylaw and bylaw eleven point seven, the confirmatory bylaw. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Goodbye, Counselor Bunting and seconded by Counselor Burbeck, that bylaws eleven, six and seven be taken collectively on unanimous approval. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried, it's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading. Goodbye, Counselor Seven and seconded by Counselor Clifford, that bylaws eleven, six and seven be read a first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Third and final reading is Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Vassalakos, moving that bylaws eleven, six and seven be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn this evening's meeting, Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Ingram. All those in favor? And it's carried. Have a good night.